Good morning. Welcome to the July 27, 2020 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, please. Commissioner Craig Lynch will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Craig.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for all the blessings you've given us, and thank you all the blessings you're going to give us today, and we just pray that we use those wisely and all for your honor and your glory, Heavenly Father. All our hearts and minds heavy, Heavenly Father, is the state of our whole world, Heavenly Father, the fight against this COVID. And we pray, Heavenly Father, the doctors and the people that are studying this will soon come up with a remedy that will alleviate the problems that we're certainly going through. We thank you for all them. Thank you for their bravery, and thank you for what they're doing. Thank you for all our protectors. Those who protect us home and abroad, we continue to thank for them, and we pray, Heavenly Father, what we do in this meeting today will be in the best interest of everyone concerned, and in Christ's name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Lord and the great Jesus Christ, one nation, under God, and with the love, the glory, and justice of God.
Thank you. You may be seated. I do not have a copy of the virtual meeting notice by the governor, but I'm just going to make a general statement that this meeting is being conducted according to the statute set forth by our governor, and they will be, we have several members, and also maybe even the public online to appear via the Internet. I'll need a motion and a second to attend, to conduct this meeting from a virtual standpoint. We have a motion and a second to conduct this Zoom meeting. Would you please call the roll, Gal?
Charlotte P.
Here.
Chip Penyon.
Here.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogel. Marvin Whitworth. Mike Kush. Pettis Reed. Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now, if you would, please call the roll, Gal.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Penyon.
Here.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Here.
Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogel. Marvin Whitworth. Mike Kush. Pettis Reed. Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I have reviewed the minutes of our March 9, 2020 meeting. I find them to be in order, and I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes. We have a motion and a second to approve our March 9 meetings. Please call the roll, Gal.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Penyon.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogel. Marvin Whitworth. Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have no items withdrawn or deferred for today's meeting. Those that are online, if you have a hard time hearing us through these masks, please speak up. Those that are in attendance via the Internet, if you would speak a little more loudly than you normally do, so that we can all hear you and understand you. With that, we'll get into our regular business. Item 6A, these are items submitted for preliminary plan approval. 6A1, item number 201007, Creekside Estates, Section 2, 54 lots on 27.64 acres, zoned PUD, located along shallow waterway. Black Diamond Construction is the applicant. Doug.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and good morning, everybody, those in the room, and also those who are attending this meeting virtually. As you stated, this first item is Creekside Estates, Section 2. This should look familiar to the commission. The Board of Commissioners approved the rezoning of this tract to planned unit development, PUD, back in June of this year, just last month. The preliminary plan matches the concept plan in their pattern book. Staff did have several comments on this particular application. After reviewing those comments and the responses that were made from the applicant's design team, those comments appear to have been addressed. So with that, this plan does appear to be in good order. I will say that, of course, this is the first step as far as the subdivision process is concerned. We've got the preliminary plan, which is basically the master plan, and then construction drawings will be the next step, which are handled administratively. But a lot of the fine tuning and the more detailed work, we'll see there. So if there's any issues with the preliminary plan that come as a result of that, you may see an amendment, but that just kind of goes without saying. Not this one specifically, but that's just kind of an overall, how the process would work with this. But with that, this appears to be in good order, and we'd recommend approval.
Questions for staff?
Can I make a motion to approve?
We have a motion and a second to approve Creekside Estates, Section 2, item number 201007. Any other comments? Call the roll, please, Gal.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Penyon.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogel. Marvin Whitworth. Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. 6A2, item 201008, Thompson Downs, 99 lots on 75.9 acres, zoned RL, located along Richard Richardson Road. WR Thompson is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. The applicant's proposing to construct a new subdivision on the subject property. The property is zoned RL, residential low density, but you'll notice that the lot sizes on here are more akin to what you would see in an RM subdivision. Of course, that goes back to, we've had this discussion before, as far as subdivisions that meet certain criteria, as far as being on step system and having adequate water for fire hydrant protection in the subdivision, which this does meet. So they are allowed by the zoning ordinance to go down to the RM densities, as far as that's concerned. As far as our comments are concerned, we did have quite a few on this one. Part of it had to do with some of those lots, and you can see, kind of, and Mike will kind of show this as we're going, the stream buffers along there. We wanted to see those lots outside of the stream buffer. Really don't want to see the stream buffer necessarily on the lots themselves, because most of the homeowners wouldn't know that that is a stream buffer and to protect it. But as far as the design of that goes, that's been handled. Most of those lots have been removed from those existing stream buffer areas that are required. The biggest issue besides that was traffic. There was a traffic study that was done on this particular subdivision. I'm going to let Mike speak a little more detailed on that, so I'll turn it over to Mike.
All right. Richland Richardson Road, they did a T-dot left turn analysis to see if it would be required, but the traffic in this area, even incorporating all the students for this school zone, would not warrant a left turn into the subdivision, but they are going to provide a dedicated right and left out of the subdivision, and an entrance lane coming into the subdivision. There is only a 50-foot swath, I think, or a little bit more coming in, so we're going to have to work carefully to make sure we've got the proper turning radiuses coming into this subdivision. It is a challenging piece of property, like Doug said, with their hydrologic determination. They did have a couple streams identified, and they have removed the lots out of the streams, but we're going to probably require several of them, that backup and awkward shaped ones, to have a critical lot grading plan, to see where the house is going to sit on the lot. This is just the, I guess, the southern section. Their entrance is off Richland Richardson Road. They do provide a stub to the south, and I'll show you the north end. There is a large area on the north end that's just going to be a reserve area that they won't develop. It's, the step system is, only has enough soil for these lots, so this is just going to be a remaining tract of land, a parcel on the north end. But we have been working with the design team on that. I think we did show a turnaround here, permanent turnaround. It's probably on another page. But all in all, they've addressed our comments. There's a lot of work to be done in the construction plan phase, so we'll work closely with the design team on that and make sure it meets our requirements. Yeah, there's the turnaround at the top up here.
Does staff feel comfortable with all the changes that need to be made?
Yes, yes. They have addressed all our preliminary plan comments. Like I said, there's a lot of work to be done on the construction plan phase. They're showing several stormwater management areas, and the roads, the curves, everything meets our design criteria for 30 mile per hour roads, but we're, there's a lot of work to be done with, you know, the vertical alignments and horizontal, making sure the flows and the ditches can, this will be in a roadside ditch section, so we'll have to make sure the ditches flow to the direction we need them to, and everything meets the county's requirements. But all in all, it, they've got it in pretty good order.
Mike, do we have plenty of room? You talk about ingress egress. Do we have plenty of room for school buses and emergency equipment and those kind of things to get in and out?
Yes, sir. At the entrance of Richland Richardson Road, it ranges from, I think, 18 to 20 feet. That just meets our standards. At the entrance, we'll make sure we've got adequate movements for our school buses, our fire trucks, everything coming out. There is a box culvert bridge a little bit farther north that we'll probably have to see some work on. Let me get to that page. Bear with me just a second. Just north of the entrance, right in here, it's hard to see on this image, but it's an older box culvert. The wing walls are pretty close to the travel lanes. I'm sorry, that's not focusing, but they, we'll need some look at that. And like you said, the movements in and out of the subdivision will be a key to our evaluation as well. But like I said, all in all, they've met all our design requirements for the preliminary. The real nuts and bolts will be when we review the construction plans. I'm not sure why my pictometry won't focus. It must be Monday morning. Yeah.
Mike and Doug, this commission is becoming more and more concerned about traffic and just wanting to make sure that the ingress and egress and the turn lanes would meet some of the concerns that we've addressed in the past. And is that something that you guys will continue to look at and report back to this commission when it comes to final?
Yeah, well, I mean, when it comes to the traffic, and of course, that's why we required the traffic study on this particular wall, rather than most development that we see, especially larger residential developments. After looking at this traffic study, the traffic flows on Richland Richardson are just low compared to some of the other roads we look at. And as far as subdivisions go, I mean, 9, 900 lots is a fairly good sized subdivision, but of course, we've seen a lot larger, as you know. So the numbers just didn't necessitate, at least at this time, any kind of turn lanes or anything like that. Now, in the future, if we ever see some sort of comprehensive improvement of Richland Richardson Road, I mean, that may be something we look at at that time. But as of right now, at least, the numbers as they are now, it just didn't warrant the turn lane. But to answer your question, yes, we look at that pretty much every development.
Right, right. Like Doug said, just the number of rooftops on Richland Richardson Road, as we speak right now, doesn't warrant, the opposing traffic coming, you know, to the south would not require a dedicated left turn lane turning into the development. Like I said, in the future, there could be need for that. There are a couple of large parcels to the south. We do have a stub to this one, but we have not seen any plans on that as of yet. I talked to Greg Brooks at the Highway Department. This Richland Richardson Road is on this year's paving rotation, so they're soon to be repaving and striping Richland Richardson Road, so that'll help as well with the road condition right now. So but all in all, like I said, we still have a lot of work to do with the construction plans and its review.
Mike, if they have to do a turn in lane later on, when something else is approved on past that, right? Possibility of that?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Do they have to, if the subdivision gets larger, somebody else has got to pave that?
If the conditions, at the time we look at the new lots, the additional lots, if that requires turn lane improvements, we would work with that developer to make any improvements where they're needed. So, but like I said, there's not a whole lot of rooftops on Richland Richardson Road, a lot of open land, so it didn't warrant a left turn lane right now. It's going to be a challenge. Like I said, there's a box culvert bridge pretty far, not that far up the road here, right in this location, that will most likely need some work if we need to widen out the road in that area. So, but yes, it, Richland Richardson Road is just a country road. It's getting some, resurfaced in the week, next week or two, so that should improve the rideability of it and the function of it as well, with the Highway Department on their normal rotation.
This, Commissioner, and I think I'm probably speaking for several of the planning commissioners as well, is it possible to put the turning lane that's not warranted right now in the preliminary plans for the future, when we get into other things? Is it possible to go ahead and include that in the plans, so we'll know what it looks like?
You mean, from like a design standpoint?
Sure.
Well, that was one of our earlier discussions with the design team. Their option was to go ahead and install a left turn lane and forego a traffic study, just say, we'll go ahead and install it. So our concerns, like mentioned before, was the box culvert bridge a little bit farther up. You know, you've got to have an approach taper coming down from the south to widen the roads around the turn lanes. But also, what we have to be careful with is the, a lot of the deeds on the adjacent properties go to the center line of the road. Now, the Highway Department has a prescriptive easement, which is essentially 20 feet either side of the center line. So even with the prescriptive easement, you don't have enough room. So if we had to put in a turn lane now, we would have to require right of way dedication from the adjacent property owners at this time. So with it not being warranted, I don't know if we can force them to dedicate right of way at this time. So it's a quandary, but it's, like I said.
Now, one thing that we might be able to have the engineer look at as part of this process would be to look at those lots along their frontage at least, and say, okay, in the future, in the event a future turn lane might be required, make sure your lots are sized appropriately, so that if right of way dedication is needed, or we have to purchase right of way, that we're not creating some kind of a nonconforming situation with the lots, like kind of, just like a reserve area, if we're not necessarily dedicating right of way along their frontage, just for them to plan for that, you know, if that happens in the future. That way, they're not really, again, it's still their property at that point. That may be something that we might be able to look at.
If we get into turn lanes in the future, at some point in time, somewhere down the road, to purchase those right of ways, would that be county expense?
For those that weren't going under some sort of development, yes.
So the adjacent property, you can see, this is Richland Richardson Road on the right side of the screen, and this is the proposed road coming into the development. There, like I said, there's only, can't read the dimensions, 74 feet across the front here. So there's not a whole lot of room. There's enough room to get a three lane road coming out, but you have a, an existing property owner right here to the, just south of the entrance, that the developer does not control. And then likewise, across the street, they do not control that as well. This is the adjacent property owner here, and then another property owner across the street. So we would have to obtain right of way from both of these parcels, maybe even another parcel or two farther to the north for the approach taper coming from the opposing direction. So it's tight. It is tight. I won't tell you any different, but it's, like I said, we reviewed the warrant analysis. They followed T-dots determination, and because of the opposing traffic counts, the speed of the traffic in the area, it was not warranted. So they do own more frontage along the south here, but as you can see, there's a large pond that their hydrologic determination came back as a water feature of the state. So there's a spring and another pond right in here. It might even show up on my wetlands layer. Yeah, there's a couple freshwater ponds that are showing up on the wetlands layer. But needless to say, they still have a lot of homework to do, a lot of pencil sharpening and figuring to make this work. And if the construction plans do not meet the county's requirements, the project does not move ahead until it does.
I've got, I guess, a stupid question. Why would you build a lot Phase 1 with the possibility of having to add to the road, move a box culvert, if 10 years from now you can't get the land and/or slash right of way to get that built? Why would you not want all that covered before you started?
Their traffic study looks at where we are in this particular time. Let me finish. Where we are in this particular time, and they project the growth of this development being developed out and growth in the surrounding area. So they're assuming this area is growing as well, but the, even with that full build out and the added growth in the area, it did not warrant a left turn lane going in because of the opposing traffic, that everything that I mentioned before, did not warrant that. Like I said, they did provide a stub to the south, so there is room for another entrance if this were to develop. And I think there is talks with somebody wanting to develop this property, but we have not seen a plan for that yet. So, but to answer your question, even at full build out and the added growth in the area, it did not warrant a turn lane.
Other questions for staff?
Like I said, we go through every checklist item for the preliminary plan requirements. These are, you have to, you know, do X, Y, and Z before we can approve these plans. And if it doesn't meet all those requirements, it doesn't come to y'all. So they, like I said, I'm just giving them a heads up that this is a challenging piece of property. It's a challenging road, Richland Richardson Road, with the adjacent lots in the area. If the construction plans don't meet the county's requirements, there's a higher level of work that needs to be done for the construction plans. So we review those very closely, and if it does not meet our requirements, it does not progress to the construction phase.
Mr. Chair, hearing no further. Comments or questions? I'll make a motion to approve subject to any staff comments.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plan on item 20-1008 for Thompson Downs. Other questions? Please call the roll, Gal.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Penyon.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogel. Marvin Whitworth. Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. 6B, these are items submitted for final plat approval. 6B1, 18-2023, the estates of Stewart Creek, 19 lots on 20.77 acres, zoned RM, located along Stewart Creek Road. Hollings Head Land is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved at the Planning Commission's February 12, 2018 meeting. Construction has been progressing on the infrastructure for that development, and the layout of the final plat does match the preliminary approval. Our comments have been addressed, the ones that we had. I will make a note, really just to call out. You'll see on the, I guess that'd be the north side of this development, where you see there's a, that what Mike is circling right there. There is a lot right there that's actually going, it's the subject of an additional subdivision plat. That has not been recorded yet. That was just resubmitted to our office last week for review. It had been submitted probably about the same time a lot of these other plats were submitted, but for whatever reason, it was never recorded. That would need to be recorded prior to this plat being recorded, because if it's not, then the recording of this plat would create a lot of less than five acres, which would be that exist, that parcel that Mike was just circling. So that would be an illegal subdivision at that point, because it's not included on this plat. I just wanted to make that note, just so everybody was aware of that. A little bit unusual, but nothing that we can't handle. Just wanted to point that out for your information more than anything. But like I said, the comments have been addressed, and this plat appears to be in good order. So if we have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions for staff?
This is what Doug's talking about. This existing house is going to be carved off into a single lot by itself, and you can see the roads and the ponds that they've been working on. they've been working on. But all in all, it's, it's, it's in good order, ready, ready for y'all's approval.
Mike, as I recall in this area, there's a, a large detention pond, partly detention pond and partly maybe a borrow pit or a lake or something, perhaps behind this property is all of that, and, and we, when we looked at that property before, next door, there were some issues, talking about dead cows and other things, and trying to get water drainage to the creek. Has all of that been looked at as part of this?
Yes, sir, right. They, the, the two ponds that they're proposing for this development, they're meeting the pre-development rate of runoff, they've got a, this pond kind of drains, there's a pipe that comes out, comes down and releases here, this pond releases into this natural flow path here and gets into this large pond in this, this area, and then you've got Stewart's Creek right behind it. So, yes, everything has been worked out with that design. Some of the lots that back up to this western edge have to have minimum pad, minimum floor requirements, I believe they're, they're shown on the, on the plat, yeah, down here. Lot 7, 2, 3, and 4 will all need pad elevations. Only 7, well, 8 is, is in the flood zone as well, but 8 is a detention pond lot, so 7's the only female lot. These other lots are adjacent to the pond and have, the houses have to be elevated. But, all in all, the, the stormwater network has been reviewed and approved, and is, is well under construction.
I'll make a motion to approve subject to all staff comments.
Thank you, Lee. We have a motion and a second to approve 18-2023, the estates of Stewart Creek. Other questions or comments? Call the roll, please, Gal.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogle. Marvin Whitworth. Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, thank you. 6B2, 202057, Kerry Goodwin, re-subdivision of Lot 1, three lots on 15.82 acres, zoned RM, located along West Gum Road. Martha Whaley is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. The applicants are proposing on this plat to shift some property lines among the three lots. Since the re-subdivision affects more than just two lots, it can't be approved administratively by staff, it does have to come before the Planning Commission. Really, it's a straightforward plat, staff comments have been addressed, and we'd recommend approval with this, it's pretty straightforward.
Make motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 202057 for Kerry Goodwin. Other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Gal, please call the roll.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogle. Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Sorry, Marvin Whitworth. Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 6B3, 20-2010, Allen Road subdivision revision, four lots on 4.89 acres, zoned RM, located along Allen Road. Simmons Builders is the applicant. This includes a waiver to the off-site soil provisions. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. This plat probably looks familiar to the commission, this was actually approved by you back in February of this year. The reason it's coming back to you today is when they were field locating the existing soils area for Lot 3, it was determined that a very small portion, and Mike, if you could zoom in on that, on the, on the, yeah, on the big screen there, a very small portion of this, their soil area for Lot 3 was actually on the, what I would call the flagpole for Lot 4. Of course, our first possible, the first thing I suggested to the, the applicant surveyor was, you know, is there any way you can just kind of change the lot lines around to incorporate where that is? After we looked at it, though, the problem you're going to run into is the flagpole portion of a lot, the minimum that it can be is 25 feet, which is what it's shown as right now, so that had to have gotten within that, so that wasn't gonna, that wasn't gonna work. I was a little concerned about possible driveway access, but if you look on the left-hand side of the property, and I confirmed this with the applicant surveyor, there is a 50-foot cross-axis easement, Mike circling right there, so driveway access for that lot, Lot 4, is actually going to be along that cross-axis easement back to Allen Road. There won't be a driveway on the other side that would interfere with that soil area. So, that's really the only change to this particular plat. The plat itself is in good order, it was in good order when it was approved back in February, it was pretty much ready to be recorded, but then this issue came out. So, this was the solution that I advised the applicant that needed to happen here. So, again, really the only change on this is just having the waiver for that little bit of off-site soil area where the existing soil system is for Lot 3. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Will it be so noted that they can't build a driveway there?
We can have them add something, I mean, if, I guess if you, if they had enough room, they could do it, you know, as long as they weren't impacting it, but we can have them add a note to the plat or something just to say that, you know.
They've got enough room, it's okay.
That's the best thing to do, yeah.
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve this change to this plat with staff comments.
Thank you, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve 20-2010, Allen Road subdivision, the revision to that subdivision. Other questions? Please call the roll, Gal.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogle. Marvin Whitworth. Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 6C, these are items submitted for site plan approval. 6C1, item number 20-3026, Watson Barn Retail, construction of approximately 200 square feet office and display area for outdoor barns on approximately eight acres, zoned CS, located along Shelbyville Pike. Watson Barn Rentals is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. As you stated, the applicant is planning to sell portable barns on the subject property. We reviewed the plan, and we did have several comments on this, a number of which have been addressed, but there are still a few outstanding items as we are looking at this. One of them has to do with the access of the property, and I will, I'm going to let Mike chime in on this a little bit as well. You can see there's two access points to the north, or one to the north and then one kind of mid to the south. You can see that existing gravel drive right there, and there's a gravel area. This site has been used for the last several years as a firework, temporary firework vending site for the 4th of July holiday, so that's what a lot of that is for. What the applicant's proposing to do is set up just a barn, as a small office trailer, if you will, and then operate that as his sales office and have the rest of that area for storage. I know the applicant is on the Zoom call this morning, because I saw him on there, but he might want to speak a little bit more to some of the particulars here. But they've got that access, and they've got the one to the north, which is actually a TDOT approved access, this one here is more just a, just a gravel driveway, really, more than anything. They're showing a large area to be used for storage of the buildings, although my discussions with the applicant seem to indicate that he's not planning on using all that area for storage of barns. Actually, I'd be more comfortable, they just really kind of showed an area, just kind of more like a, identify the area to actually be used for the storage of barns, opposed to actually showing buildings on there. That's really not necessary to do that, but my understanding with the applicant was he wasn't going to use all of that. I think there's some issue too with, this is zoned commercial services, so the property to the north is zoned residential, a little bit of buffering is going to be required on that. Property to the south is zoned commercial services, so that's not as, as big of an issue. So, those are some of the comments that I had, Mike, I'll let you chime in on some of the other.
Okay. Like Doug mentioned, typically, a commercial site on a state route needs a commercial entrance, and they're still utilizing this gravel entrance here, and I'm, and you can see for the truck-turning templates coming in and going out, that they're still proposing to use this gravel drive, and our comment was that it needs to be upgraded to a commercial driveway entrance ramp, and this will also have to be reviewed and approved through TDOT. So, I'm, I'm not sure that this is going to fly the way it is, it's going to need to be improved or eliminated and force everybody to come into the northern paved ramp where they have it here. And this section actually lines up with the median cut, which, which is better for people leaving to go north back on 231. So, that's, that's going to be a hurdle we need to get them to address. And, let's see, demonstrate how fire trucks, delivery trucks will maneuver in the site with a truck-turning template, and they, they are not showing any improvements in this area in the back, and I'll show you on, on the arrow imagery. Lot, let me get to the right map, sorry. Lot of this area is still dirt and rock, there is some to the south that Doug said that is used for the, I'm sorry, it's jumping around, used for the fireworks displays. Right in this area, but they're showing storage or display areas for barns in this area farther to the north, and one of our comments, I believe, had to do with showing improvements in this area. They thought it was all rock, but I, I tend to disagree, you can see the ruts of where vehicles have been rutting up this area. So, we're still thinking that this area needs to be improved, or like Doug said, limited to farther down here to the south, but if you're limited to this area to the south, this existing gravel driveway needs to be upgraded. Let's see, and there's some other fine-tuning stuff about erosion control measures needing to be added, but a commercial site needs a commercial entrance. I don't believe this gravel driveway is going to work, and, and I doubt very seriously TDOT's going to approve this the way it is.
Does TDOT make the final call on, on the entrance?
Yes, they, they have a, a developer packet, kind of like CUD, that you have to permit package that you have to go through and get everything approved. And one of the things they have to get is a letter from the local jurisdiction saying that they're good with it, and I don't know if I can write a letter myself, showing this driveway the way it is. So, either, either the plan needs some lot of revision to show this entrance farther to the north, or upgrade this entrance the way it is now, and this, the imagery date is August of last year, so that's not too old, a street view image from Google Earth, so it's a pretty recent image.
The highway crossover is more to the north, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
It's up here, and it lines up to the main entrance to the county's Rock Quarry.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Doug, this, this doesn't have to be a paved parking lot for the display?
Well, for the display area, we're willing to work with them on that, a lot of the times we're looking at it more from a parking maneuverability area. If they're just putting the, the barns out there themselves or any kind of a storage, we tend to work with them for those kind of things. They are showing a small paved area, mainly just for a couple parking spots and ADA accessibility. I will say that after looking back through some of the older zoning cases with this property, this property got a variance for gravel parking years ago under our older ordinance, which is why, another reason we haven't been pushing any more parking than what they're showing on there. Like I said, they've got enough really for ADA access and a couple extra spots, but that's about it. So, even though it was approved other, under an older zoning ordinance or resolution at that time, you know, the variances kind of carry over, they don't kind of, they don't reset just because we have a new ordinance now. But when it comes to the buildings and things, we, and store, just outdoor storage in general, we try to work with the applicants on that, because we understand a lot of the times there's larger vehicles and things like that that get involved here, that ruts up the pavement pretty bad in those storage areas, so there's really no sense in making them constantly go back and repair all that, so we work with them on that.
Okay. How long would it take to get the comments from TDOT on the entrance?
It usually, we could probably have, I mean, preliminary, going through their whole process, it would probably take a month, easy, but there, we could get some follow-up comments probably in a week or two, I mean.
Are you, are you comfortable, are you comfortable with approval before TDOT's recommendation on the entrance?
No, I'm not.
Thank you.
I think the applicant is on the line if you want to hear the comment.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we have, we have the applicant and the, and their engineer on Zoom today, is it possible, maybe they could respond to some of these comments?
It is. Is the applicant present?
I am.
Would you like to make any comments?
I would. The site would not be usable if we had to pave it.
If you would, please, please state your name.
The turning radius, radius of the, of the trucks and all bringing the sheds and taking the sheds away, that needs to be gravelled. I'm good with a parking, a paved parking area, and if it's permissible, if I could be granted permission to do this using the existing driveway entrance to the north, I'm willing to consider that and work with that.
Phillip, could you, could you identify yourself for the record, just so we have your name and everything on the record?
Yes, I'm Phillip Rudolph, the owner of Watson Barn Rentals.
Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant while we've, while we've got him on the line?
You said you'd be willing to work with the northern entrance, is that the one you, and would you pave that, is that what you're saying?
That's pre-existing, that's the one that is approved by TDOT already.
Yes, we understand that that northern access is already a TDOT commercial access, right?
It's already paved?
Correct.
It does have asphalt, I mean, it's not the best, but it's technically asphalt. You see some alligatoring and...
So, Mike, am I understanding correctly, if he were to abandon this southern access point, then he could proceed forward by using that northern access without any TDOT confusion and no other issues as far as the county is concerned?
Right, we, we would need to see revised plans showing that as our main entrance coming in and going, and everything built... in and going, um, and everything built on that. Uh, and the elimination of that gravel driveway, uh, that's shown there now because we don't want it, uh, used, uh, without anybody's approval.
Mike, I think that s- some commissioners would probably like to see those plans as well. Would an, uh, a motion to defer this for at least, uh, a month be appropriate?
I, I would think so.
And before making that motion, that existing entrance there, I'd like for T-DOT to still evaluate that because that looks like a field entrance and not a commercial entrance.
Okay, yeah.
Based on the preliminary view in the picture, which there's a totally difference in the way that structure is built for commercial versus just field entrance.
Okay.
But I would like to make that motion to defer until that's determined.
We have a motion to defer for ninety da- I'm sorry, thirty days and a second. Let me just add that what we would like to see, this commissioner would like to see would be all of those staff comments addressed, uh, and reported back to this commission at the time it's, it's, it comes back to us.
Yes, sir.
Yes, and include that in that motion of deferral.
Very good. Thank you, Lee. Any other questions or comments? We have a motion to defer. Call the roll, please, gal.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogle. Marvin Whitworth. Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The item has been deferred till at least next month. Item six C two, two zero dash three zero two nine, Chestnut Valley, Section two. This is for a ma- mail kiosk, construction of a mail kiosk on nine hundred square feet lot, on a nine hundred fair, square foot lot. And that's lot one sixty-four, zoned RM, located along Ash Ridge Road. Waldron Enterprises is the applicant. I had to say Ash Ridge Road real slow. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, this, uh, applicant's proposing to add a mail kiosk for the caption development. This is, uh, one of the subdivisions that was under construction, but section still remained and due to the number of lots of the new section, had to have a, a mail kiosk for mail delivery. Uh, we've made our comments. Uh, we've, uh, had a couple of rounds with the, uh, comments with the applicant's design engineer. Uh, those comments have been addressed and is planned, appears to be a good order. Uh, I see Mark Lee from SEC is on the call. If you have any questions for him, but as far as we're concerned, this, this appears to be in good order. So we'd be happy to answer any questions.
It meets all your requirements, correct?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve item two zero dash three zero two nine for Chestnut Valley, Section two mail kiosk. Other questions? Call the roll, please, gal.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogle. Marvin Whitworth. Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item six C three, two zero dash three zero three one, Rosso Corporate Headquarters, construction of approximately twelve thousand square foot building on approximately fourteen acres, zoned commercial general located along Manson Court. Turn Cal Holdings is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, this property was rezoned by the county commission just, uh, last month. So the planning commission would have seen this in May, so this probably looks familiar to you all. Uh, the site plan shows a proposed office building and a future shop with a parking maneuvering area shown. Uh, you can see on the site plan that they're looking to, to do the, uh, the office building now. The maintenance building would be in the future and we've informed the applicant in the future that they would need to have a separate site plan approval. Uh, with that, they are proposing to grade the area where the pad would be for that, uh, future building, just while they're out there working. They're going to go ahead and take care of that. Uh, we don't have any issue with that and site plan approval not necessarily required. What they were showing on their grading plan would be, would be good enough for that. Uh, staff had some concerns on the site plan regarding, and, and Mike's going to kind of zoom into it there, that, uh, you can see it comes in off of, of Manson Court and there's a road that goes to the office building. That, staff really feels that that should be more of a ninety degree, uh, type of an intersection. I know it's not a, a, a public road and if it were a public road, of course, that pretty much would be our requirement, but, uh, there may not be a whole lot of traffic going to that back building, but at some point, you can see as someone is coming to that stop bar, having to really turn their head to make sure nothing is coming down the other direction. Uh, we discussed that with the applicant's design team. Uh, they spoke with their, uh, client and said that they wanted to pretty much keep it the way it was. I think they did tweak it just a little bit, but, uh, the, uh, design team may want to speak a, a little bit more to that. Staff still does have some, uh, concerns about that. Overall, uh, the plan appears to be in decent order. I'll let Mike chime in on anything that he has that he'd like to discuss. One other thing I would like to mention, you recall that when this went through the zoning process, we had some discussion as to whether, uh, the access to this was going to be right where it is now on the Manson Court. You'll recall that, uh, the property right to the west was annexed into the city and that right of way is actually a T-DOT right of way. So there's been negotiations with the city and the states and the applicants now, uh, regarding access to the property and that right of way possibly being abandoned. Of course, they would have to have some sort of access to that. Uh, you know, as of right now, that is the access. So this plan, uh, would be, you know, acceptable as far as that goes, but in the future, if that access has to change, that may necessitate some changes to the site plan. So that's really more just to make the planning commission aware that that's still kind of out there floating around. But, uh, with that, Mike, if you had some other things to discuss, I'll turn it over to you.
Other, other than that driveway access, uh, um, was the only issue that we saw, but they've, they've addressed all our comments and the plans look, uh, to be in good order. Um, but as Doug mentioned, you know, this is a T-DOT, uh, right of way, Manson Court, so it, it'll need T-DOT approval too. Um, and also what Doug said, that this, this is under a development review for the city. You could see it's, it's surrounded by city and all, all sides. So it's a, an island of county, uh, surrounded by the city. But the plans as we're reviewing are, are, uh, in fairly good order and, uh, we recommend approval.
And approval will still be with you all trying to work out that entrance and the way that angle?
Yeah, it'd be subject to T-DOT's approval, uh, because we'll have to write a letter, you know, review this, approve it and write a letter to T-DOT saying, hey, this meets our requirements, you know, now y'all take a look at it.
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Thank you, Lee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item two zero dash three zero three one for Rosso Corporate Headquarters. Any other questions? Call the roll, please, gal.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogle. Marvin Whitworth. Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item six C four, two zero dash three zero three two, Premier Fence Company, construction of approximately nine thousand six hundred square feet of construction, sales and service space on approximately four point seven five acres, zoned commercial services, located along Sulfur Springs Road. John Schultz. It's not right, but that's the applicant.
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, the planning commission approved the site plan for this property back in March of this year. Uh, it really just showed a building toward the front and then mostly a storage area, uh, behind that. Uh, that plan for that particular, uh, development fell through, so that's why this is coming before you. It's the same property, just a, a different design. Uh, you'll notice that there's actually two buildings on the site plan. You've got the one in the front, but then there's an additional building in the back as well. Uh, staff had numerous comments on this. Uh, we've gone, uh, had meetings with the, uh, design team with, uh, for the applicant. Uh, it appears that those comments have been resolved in the plan after making the changes that we discussed with their design team, uh, have been made. So the design as it's shown now, uh, on the plan that's before you, uh, appears to be in good order. So we'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Thank you, Chip. We have a motion and a second to approve item two zero dash three zero three two for Premier Fence Company. Take your time. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please, gal.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones. David Jones. Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogle. Marvin Whitworth. Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I see no old business listed. Does anyone have any old business you'd like to bring up? If not, uh, item eight, so these are staff reports and other business. Uh, eight A is amendments to the Rutherford County zoning ordinance and I'll turn it over to Doug.
Yes, sir, thank you. I appreciate, uh, this opportunity to bring some, uh, possible amendments to your attention tonight. Uh, during our course of, uh, you know, everyday, uh, enforcement with the zoning ordinance and just, uh, administering, uh, development and growth, uh, we come across things occasionally we think need to be changed and we've, we've come across a number of things that we want to bring, uh, to your attention today, uh, for the possibility of moving some possible amendments forward. Now, uh, I'm going to break these down into kind of four separate, uh, items as you see on your agenda materials. The first one's going to be under site plan requirements. Uh, and this, uh, the, the changes are, are proposed are on your iPads and I think Mike's got it up on the big screen as well for you all to, to look at. Uh, the first one has to do with a, uh, pre-application conference for site plans. Uh, in the subdivision regulations, there are requirements for preliminary plans and final plats to have pre-application meetings. Really is just a time for us to be able to sit down with the applicant or on a phone call or whatnot, just to determine, uh, what needs to be done, what things are we looking at, things to look out for, whatnot. Uh, we noticed that that language was not included in the, uh, site plan section of the zoning ordinance. So what we're proposing to do is what you can see there in bold, add that language in there. It says, "Prior to the submittal of an application for site plan approval, the applicant or their representative shall contact the planning director and/or county engineer to discuss the scope of the project to determine if a pre-application conference will be required." Uh, sometimes the, the site plan may be so straightforward, so small, we don't, we could say now just go ahead and submit something, we'll look at it, but sometimes if it's a larger project, we'll want to actually sit down with the development team. Uh, that's something we do routinely anyway, but we thought it'd be good to have it actually codified in the ordinance. Uh, something else, and this kind of harkens back to the site plan we looked at just a little earlier on the, uh, commission agenda with regards to the barn rental place. Uh, the zoning ordinance current requires all site plans to be approved by the planning commission with the following exceptions, and you see A and B there, non-residential accessory buildings or additions less than three thousand square feet or parking lot additions with no new building construction. Uh, staff is proposing, and we'd kind of want to get your feedback on that, uh, if along with that, would you be comfortable with any new construction under three thousand square feet? So that plan that came before you with the Watson Barn Rental, since it was so small, just a two hundred square foot office building with the storage, uh, would that be something you'd be comfortable having staff review administratively or do you want that still to come before you? So that's just something, a little food for thought. I'm just going to go through all these and we can have some open discussion afterward if that's okay. Uh, the third, on-site plans has to do with the timeline for approved site plans. Uh, the zoning ordinance requires site plans to either be approved, approved with conditions or denied within ninety days of a complete application submittal. Uh, there have been limited occasions where applicants have requested a deferral or multiple deferrals which can exceed the ninety day limit. Uh, however, that situation is not defined in the ordinance of how that's handled. Uh, so really, we just propose to add a little bit of language to that section of the site plan approvals. That after that sentence, you can see that right, that bold area right there on, uh, top of page two, uh, "The applicant or the representative may waive this time requirement and consent to an extension of the applicable time period." Again, that's not really changing anything that we're already doing. It just puts it in writing, so to speak. Uh, the next item has to do with, uh, CBUs, uh, cluster boxes or mail kiosks. Uh, at the, I guess it was the last day meeting, uh, there was some consensus amongst the planning commission that they would be comfortable with us looking at these administratively as opposed to requiring planning commission review. As you recall, when these regulations were originally created, uh, the planning commission wanted to see those until they got a better grip on them, better feel for them, and I think the commission agreed at this point, they're at that state. So what the staff is proposing to do, the existing language is number seven, that first number seven under section eleven oh one T, and what we're doing is proposing to change that wording to the revised number seven, which is the second one on that page, which would basically allow planning staff to administratively approve any mail kiosk applications. The third item has to do with commercial district bulk regula- I'm sorry, that should be residential district bulk regulations in the CN district, uh, for this amendment that we're talking about. The commercial neighborhood zone allows for residential uses, both single family and multifamily as well as commercial uses, and that's defined in the zoning ordinance. Uh, it was discovered that although residential uses are allowed, there were no bulk requirements as far as setbacks, lot area, et cetera, on table three, which had the rest of the commercial bulk requirements. So this was just, uh, really, I guess more than anything, uh, this was more of an oversight. We just never realized that it wasn't in there until someone actually asked about it. So what we're proposing to do on the chart there on page three is to add in some bulk requirements for minimum lot area, minimum lot width setbacks. We looked at the, uh, the, the bulk requirements for the multifamily as well as in the EAC. The EAC also allows residential uses, multifamily at least, but this gives us, uh, uh, something that we're comfortable with as far as setbacks and, and lot area for all that. So, uh, the next is just a little clarification on fences, walls and hedges. Uh, corner lots under our current, current ordinance, excuse me, have one front yard, which is where the front door of the house faces and that's where it's addressed to, and then what we call an alternate side yard, which is along the cross street. Uh, there was some confusion as to the allowable fence location and design within the alternate side yard. So we just wanted to clarify that alternate side yards on a corner lot would be treated as a side yard for the purposes of this section and not another front yard. Not, you know, we didn't want to punish a corner lot for having, uh, being on two, uh, corner, uh, two, uh, streets like that. And the last change in appendix A, uh, this was kind of something we saw as we were looking at some of the other amendments. Um, under definitions and rules for the construction of language, uh, one of the rules in the appendix lists the planning director and refers to the planning director or their authorized representative. Uh, the county engineer is also mentioned in the zoning ordinance, but that language was not included in appendix A. So we're just proposing to add that to appendix A. The title county engineer shall refer to the county engineer or an authorized representative. So that's pretty straightforward. Uh, none of these amendments are what I would say, I don't think really controversial by any means. I think it clarifies a lot of the things that we're already doing. I think the biggest admit, uh, train, change to the planning commission would be if you decided, first of all, if you wanted staff to look at, uh, new non-residential construction of three thousand square feet, up to three thousand square feet, and then the cluster boxes, if you wanted, uh, the, the staff to review those as was indicated. So I'll be happy to answer any questions at this point. Um, if you are comfortable with these, we'll go ahead and move these forward. Uh, these will require a planning commission public hearing as well as a board of commissioner public hearing, uh, before we can enact these. So again, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for staff? They do seem to be, uh, uh, straightforward. Um, if we move them forward, we'll probably have them on a public hearing at our next, uh, six o'clock meeting, which would probably be August the tenth.
That's correct. And just so you know, we've got one other zoning request on that agenda, uh, and it's actually one that you just looked at, uh, about a month ago. Uh, it was the, uh, it was a PUD amendment for Robert Stroop's property, Lidle Creek. Um, the reason it's, has to come back before you is it's a PUD amendment and that part's not changing, but they also want to, after discussion with them, they want to take out a portion that they're no longer using in the PUD and zone it back to RM. Since that wasn't discussed at the planning commission, we thought the best route would be to send that back through the planning commission and kind of start the process over, but that wasn't controversial and I don't foresee there being a lot of discussion on that. So it should be hopefully, you know, knock wood, straightforward meeting.
I have a question, uh, about the new construction. Can you give us another example? You said the one today with the, um, on Shabbaville Highway with the barns would be the one today with the Sheberville Highway with the barns would be an example. What would another example be of a non-residential new construction accessory building?
Well, with this, you know, right now, if somebody has an existing business and they make an addition of less than 3,000 square feet, we can do that administratively. I guess what I'm talking about is if somebody has a brand-new piece of property that has not been built on yet, and they want to build, let's say, a 2,000-square-foot building and associated parking area, if you wanted this to move forward, we could handle that administratively as well. You know, I don't have a specific example to share with you. We have seen several of them where they just want to build like a 1,500-square-foot office. Seems like there was one on Highway 99 a few years ago, one that just popped in my head. We've had another since then, where they were building a very small office building for, it was a doctor's office, and they, I think it was only like 20-some-hundred square foot, something like that. We would have done that administratively if this language was in there, I guess is what I'm saying, for new construction. You know, once it's there, you know, as long as the additions don't exceed 3,000 square feet, then we can handle it administratively. I'm just curious if the planning commission would be interested in allowing us to look at new construction of less than 3,000 square feet. It doesn't matter to staff. I just wanted at least bring it to your attention, since we were looking at some other changes. I just thought I'd throw that in there.
Would that not subvert the right for the public to attend a public hearing and provide comments to us?
Well, I don't think any more than a site plan for an addition would do, because, you know, these meetings, these are public meetings, but they're not public hearings. So again, if it's not something you're comfortable with, that's fine. I just thought I'd throw it out there. There are other jurisdictions that have an administrative approval of new site plans up to a certain square footage, so, but if that's not something you're comfortable with, I don't feel strongly one way or the other about it. I just thought I'd throw it in there since I was looking at some other things. That's all. But, I mean, as with anything, all of our plans and everything are public record, and if something had to be rezoned, that would still have to come before the planning commission and board of commissioners for public hearings and everything like that. That wouldn't change any. This would just be the actual site plan, looking at the site plan part of things. That's all.
Good questions?
The only change that I'm hesitant on, especially new business, you know, I'm, that's the only change that I'm a little hesitant.
And again, that's fine. That's why we brought it up for discussion. I mean, if the commission is comfortable with the way things are operating, that's fine. We just thought we'd throw it out there with everything else we were looking at.
Mr. Chairman, I'm comfortable with everything except maybe the new buildings also, as Ms. P. had mentioned. I don't know about putting Mike in there about the county engineer, but that's okay. We can deal with that. But other than that, if you need a motion to go ahead with this stuff and keep reviewing it, that'd be great.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know if necessarily know if a motion is necessary. I mean, as long as we have consensus, I think we're okay. We're not, you're not approving anything tonight or today. We'll bring these back as amendments, you know, more refined amendments at the next meeting for you all, and we'll just leave out that one about the new construction less than 3,000 square feet.
That's it, yeah.
I think the ones for me that are less than 3,000 square feet still help me to paint a picture of what's going on.
Sure.
Helps to make those decisions on those larger pieces as well. So to me, I'd like to retain that as well. One thing on the mail, on the mail kiosk, I'm all for administrative approval on that, but I would like to know if we are, if there's some sort of measure of effectiveness or something that we can say these are working as we've been approving those. And I know that there may not be a lot of those constructed yet, but somehow, some way, I'd like to know if there would be, need to be changes, or if what we're doing is working.
Okay. Yeah, and we'll, we'll kind of look at that as we go along. Right, yeah, I mean, that's fair.
What metrics would be involved in that, but I would like to know if that is working.
Mm-hmm.
What's the wish of the commission? Do you want to bring item three back for the public hearing, or would you like to remove that at this time?
What was Mr. Jones?
Yeah. As I, as I understand it, item one was site plan requirements. They're okay with that, with the exception, we'll just leave out the new construction less than 3,000 square feet, and everything else in there, timeline for approval, pre-application conferences, everything. I mean, as I'm hearing it, correct me if I'm wrong, but as I'm hearing the discussion, that seems everybody's okay with that. Under the mail kiosk, going forward with those amendments to make them administrative, but then keeping the planning commission informed as to, you know, if we're seeing any problems, and if we are, we'll let you know, and that may have to come back as an amendment, kind of similar to what we're doing here. Moving forward with adding the residential bulk requirements for the commercial neighborhood district, adding the, no, I didn't actually add it in there, adding the small change to the fences, walls, and hedges, and then adding the Appendix A.
And I know we talked about the fences several months ago, I believe it was. Does that seem to have worked itself out? I mean...
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's, that's, that's fine. Those changes, that's what we're currently doing. This just really kind of clarifies, because we get phone calls, especially from people on corner lots a lot of time, well, you know, that's, you know, I've got a road frontage here and a road frontage there. Where do I put my fence here? I can't tell by reading the regs. And to be quite honest, staff sometimes gets confused about it, too. So this is going to help us just as much as the applicants, just to say, okay, wherever your front door is facing, that's technically your front yard, and then the cross street would be just treated as a side yard. So that just clarifies that. Okay, very good.
Let's go ahead. Let me see if I can word a motion. I'd like to have this kind of wrapped up. Move forward with all four items, with the exception of item number one, removing the new construction of less than 3,000 square feet. Removing that one. Can I have a motion in that?
Yes.
Motion and a second. Everybody understand where we're going? Call the roll, Gail.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogle. Marvin Whitworth. Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. So these four items, with the exception of the 3,000-square-foot new construction, will go to the, will come back to the planning commission on Monday, August the 10th, 6:00 p.m. for a public hearing.
Correct.
Thank you. Anything else?
Just a couple of quick announcements. Be on the lookout for an email from me for a couple of events coming up. One of them is the Power of Ten that's sponsored by Cumberland Region tomorrow. That'll be on August the 13th. That's going to be virtual this year, but I've got a link for signup and everything, so I'll pass that along to you. Also, Consolidated Utility District passed along an invitation for a, an event for the, their new, the expansion to their water treatment plant. It's in September. I don't have the exact date, just right in front of me, but I'll be sending an email with the details of that for your consideration. So just be on the lookout with that. Other than that, Mike, did you have anything? I think we're good to go.
Very good. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, August the 10th, here in this courthouse, in this room, and it will be a 6:00 p.m. meeting. Anyone else have anything? Once again, thank you for your time, your attendance, and your participation. We are adjourned.